Patience, we're coming out of our closed session that we started at 6 o'clock. We have nothing to report out at this time. It's 7:00 PM, well, let's see, it's 7:03 PM. We're beginning our regular session of the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on this Tuesday, October 27th, 2005. I'd ask our city clerk to do roll call, please.
Mayor Skilman?
Present.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Delasso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Now I'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. Now I'll move on to approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and adopted under this agenda from our regular meeting of October 13th.
Move to approve?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record reflect that's a 5-0 vote in favor of approval. Now I'll move on to housekeeping items, and for that I will turn again to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following: silent electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that may be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the south wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrance to the chamber. Place the completed speaker cards in the designated tray located by the city clerk, and when their name is called, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Berich.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. For the benefit of the public, my name is George Berich. I'm a former Kattati city councilman here, and I've been speaking on these housekeeping rules for a couple of years now without getting any kind of response from the city. You'll notice that they're titled "housekeeping items," but for many months they were titled "housekeeping rules," and all the rules were spelled out here in black and white. The issue has been for a long time that there actually are no housekeeping rules. There's never been any housekeeping rules voted on or brought upon by any city council in this town as long as I can remember, and I've been coming here for 18 years. This is a fabrication. It's a bunch of phony baloney. It's a bunch of rules that were made up in a back room here in City Hall to try to control and suppress people's rights here in these chambers and try to set some kind of decorum. Now, some cities do set some type of policy for conduct in a council chamber, but it's put on the agenda, it's discussed, staff makes a recommendation on what those rules might be. By law, the discussion is opened up to the public for public input, and the councils discuss the issue and vote on the matter appropriately. But for some strange reason, not so strange to me after seeing this for two years, but for some strange reason, this city can't do things the right way. They want to hijack the process, they want to avoid proper procedure, and they force this on us without any type of explanation whatsoever. I beg the council to bring this back, put it on the agenda, and codify it into our city policy statement, but their silence has been deafening. I've gotten smirky remarks, I've gotten mocked when I've sat down, I've yet to get a phone call from the council, an offer for a cup of coffee. How can we come together on this and do things the right way? The stubbornness and arrogance of this city council is beyond reproach. This city and this community and the people in these chambers need to know what is sitting up here in front of us. These are not city leaders, they're bought and paid for city officials.
All right, thank you for that. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment on the housekeeping items as they were listed? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll move on to announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open-for-Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronat Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0304. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com. The Kattati Historical Society will host a Fall History Forum in the Kattati Room at 3:00 PM on Saturday, November 1st. See kattahtihistoricalsociety.org on the web for more details. Now I'll move on to one of our enjoyable agenda items, which is our honorary mayor. So I would ask Liam Reynolds to come forward, please, to the podium.
Thank you. I'm just going to take a minute because I know it's a very packed meeting, but first I'd like to tell you guys about two things that are like isolated at Rancho that I think are pretty exciting, is that for a long time we haven't had a turnabout, like winter formal dance, and I've been working with our administrator of student affairs, and it seems like this year we're going to get it back. So that's pretty cool. And I'd like to add on to the record that Rancho is the best and most spirited school. And one more thing that we just finished was we participated in State Farm's campaign for Two and Two, which is Two Eyes on the Road and Two Hands on the Wheel, which is a campaign for teen safe driving, and if we're selected as the one of the top 11 big schools, we would win a $100,000 grant, so I believe that's pretty cool. And things that will affect our community that we're involved in are, within the next few weeks, we are going to have our next blood drive. We have four of those a year, and we raise hundreds of life-saving pints of blood for the community. We are going to start our canned food drive. Last year we raised 27,000 pounds of food, and we're hoping to beat that goal this year. And we haven't done it in the past, but we're trying to have a toy drive and jean drive for the community. And those last three things, the blood drive, the canned food drive, and the toy drive, jean drive, are things that Kattati may be able to help us with. Thank you.
Fantastic. And is there anything that your fellow students were mentioning about what they'd like to see from the city, or, I appreciate the update, that's great to hear that you've got so many activities going on, that's fantastic. Just wanted to know, was there anything that they wanted us to change about the city and how we run things?
When we asked them, a lot of people didn't really understand the question, but they just said if Kattati would be able to help us out with the things that we do. So that's why I brought the blood, not the blood drive, but the canned food drive and the toy drive, jean drive. I was just kind of thinking maybe there could be some kind of bin anywhere in maybe a populated area of Kattati that people could make donations to.
Okay, terrific. That's great. All right, so let me turn the rest of my councilmembers, see if they would like to chime in here. Yes, Councilmember Landman.
Mayor Reynolds, welcome back. Good to see you again. Thank you for the report. It's been a long time since we've had that, especially it sounds like you're doing a lot of good work, you and your colleagues over there at the school, so that's great. I was going to ask, actually, if there's anything we can do, I guess the point's passed on the grant, there's nothing that the city can help in terms of background or support at that point for that? Basically, you've made a submission, it's up to a...
One thing that wasn't mentioned, but I just came to my head, is we have like Unity Week, we call it, later in the school year, and maybe the city would be able to help us with getting communication to people, because we have a bunch of presentations that are of cultural diversity, and I believe Kattati might be able to help us with that.
I think that's a great idea, and in terms of working out for the toy drive, I would imagine if you worked through our staff, you'd probably find strong support for doing something like that, and might be something you could partner with the fire district too, because historically the police department and the fire district have partnered in the holiday season in toy drives, so maybe we can help you make this even bigger in terms of locations for bins, just a suggestion, and anything we can personally do. Feel free to let us know as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely. Yes, Vice Mayor Moore?
Liam, thanks for that update, and thanks for participating in the honorary mayor. I would have to agree with you, having a junior at Rancho Kattati, that they are the most spirited. I think that the city could probably find some ways to help out with some of those things, at least in getting the word out, either maybe through our marquee, or maybe at a little spot on our website or something along those lines that would help get that information out to the public in a more general fashion. So I would think that that would be something that we could look at. And I am encouraged to hear that you are supporting the blood drives. Those are important and certainly come right back to the community, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Delasso.
Thank you, Mayor. Liam, nice to have you back. Definitely some pretty exciting things with those different drives, and you've already heard it from Two, so I won't say it again, but get the information to us, we'll find a way to get that out. Could you tell me a little bit more about this, what do you call it, Two and Two?
Oh, Two and Two?
Yeah.
So State Farm has a campaign for teen safe driving, and it's every school they can get to participate, so it raises awareness to that school and the community around the school. Well, theirs is Two Eyes on the Road and Two Hands on the Wheel, and they want each school to focus on different aspects of teen safe driving. We decided to focus on not having our phone distract us while we were driving, and if we were to win, we get a $100,000 grant that I believe 30% or more of it has to go towards teen safe driving, and the rest the school can use, however, as long as it's approved by State Farm.
So what is it that you guys need to do to actually win?
So we had a 1,500-character write-up, and we had to make a video of 30 seconds or less to prove why we are the most worthy of winning, which we turned in last Sunday.
Well, great. Well, congratulations on doing that, and, you know, good luck on winning. That'd be great for the ranch to get $100,000?
$100,000.
Wow. So good luck on that, and thank you very much again for coming back and reporting out to us. It's been a privilege having you here and hearing from you. Thanks.
Thank you. And for the Two and Two, even if we don't win, we had this banner that read, "I pledge to not be distracted by my phone while driving," and we had the entire banner filled up with signatures, so even if we don't win, I'm glad that we were able to spread the awareness.
Excellent.
Very good. Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you for sharing that information. I'm hoping that in the future, since you're so involved with the student body there, that you would consider providing information to our city so that we kind of know the different events that are going on. I think sometimes we don't necessarily get all of that information, so I'm hoping that you'll consider doing that. I think it's wonderful that you guys have the blood drives. Quite often, blood is very important, as we all know, but that starting it in high school is something that people will tend to then donate blood for the rest of their life, so I'm really excited that you guys have that program there. And I was wondering, can you tell me a little bit about the jean drive? What is that? I've not heard of that before.
Oh, so a lot of times they're just called like clothing drives, but I remember last year it didn't pan out, but we have jean drives, and it's just whoever has an old pair of jeans that's in reasonably okay condition turns it into a box, and that's brought over to, I'm not sure if it's maybe the Salvation Army, or just, I'm not sure where it's brought to exactly, but the jeans are given to a worthy cause.
Thank you, and thank you for coming back and visiting us.
Thank you.
All right. Well, then I've got this honorary mayor certificate that I will pass to you. It says this title is conferred for your outstanding contribution to the cause of good government, and as an expression of our appreciation for your support of this office, I do therefore confer this title with all the privileges and honors attendant to this distinction. So I'll bring this down to you, and if there's anybody who has a camera who would like to take a photo, that would be the time to do it. So let's come on down. All right. All right. Thank you, Liam, very much. So we'll move on to our presentations. We've got two this evening. One is Sonoma County Supervisor David Rabbit, and I would ask you to come to the podium for your presentation. Thank you.
Liam's a hard act to follow. Best wishes with everything, Liam, in the future. Mayor Skilman and Vice Mayor Moore, and councilmembers, thank you for having me here tonight. I know that Councilmember Landman, I think it was last week, was at Petaluma City Hall, and I was giving an update there, so I'll try not to repeat too many things from that particular presentation. A couple of things I just wanted to update you on at the county level that concern Kattati. One, first thing is our veterans' buildings. You know, the veterans' building system in really the state of California, you know, all built in the 1950s with the wonderful passage of a bond measure at that time, no real money set aside to keep them up over the course of time, and that's kind of fallen through the cracks. There's been a lot of deferred maintenance, quite frankly, and here in Sonoma County, we're not alone. It's really a statewide issue. But we're making some inroads, and thankfully, really, it's because of some third-party management that has proven successful to really decrease the overall costs of running the veterans' buildings. We saved about a half a million to $700,000 this last year, and so the board did choose to take that money and reinvest it in the buildings and the capital improvements, and to continue that ongoing. So we're reinvesting those savings in the deferred maintenance. Kattati Veterans Building is slated to have a kitchen renovation over the course of time in to the tune of $322,000. Petaluma is going to have a kitchen and some pavement work done. The two veterans' buildings that are going to be approached first is up in Cloverdale, which has an issue over the swimming pool, which has become a health issue that we need to address right away, and then a roof problem, I believe, that we need to address too as well in Sebastopol, I believe. So, or, I'm sorry, fire sprinklers in Sebastopol, which, because there was a matching grant there, so we're going to jump on that one. But we are making those investments as we move forward, and hopefully you'll see some adjustment going. I can also tell you that that third party, because we are a government, we still have to set the rates, because it can't be a gift of public funds to an entity, but we have now, with the actions we took last week, to provide some flexibility within those rates, discounts over certain periods of time so that they can be occupied more hours of the week, which is more utilization, which hopefully will be more rent, which hopefully will be more maintenance going forward. So that did take place last week, I just wanted to keep you up to date on that. I want to talk real briefly about the county roads, because I haven't been here since Measure A failed, and I wanted to let you know firsthand that, you know, I'm certainly disappointed that we didn't get the additional dollars to put into pavement preservation, but it hasn't meant that the county hasn't been spending dollars on roads and making it a priority. In fact, this fiscal year, we'll spend $61 million, all told, on roads in Sonoma County. It's $20 million on corrective maintenance, the brush clearing, the culvert, the drainage maintenance and the like. $22 million on capital road and bridge improvements. Here in Sonoma County, we happen to have 330 bridges, quite a few bridges, a lot of them built in an error many years ago that are in need of replacement or certainly update over time, so we're trying to at least address one or two bridges a year within the dollars available. But more importantly, and something that was started some years back, is to spend money on pavement preservation, or really pavement out there, and this year it'll be $11,575,000. It's all general fund revenues, and it's now firmly planted in the budget. At one time, it was one-time dollars coming out of different funds, but now it's embedded in the budget, which is a good thing going forward. Had the measure passed, that number would have been about $20 million, so we would have gotten there twice as fast, but it's okay, we're still spending more money now than we ever have in the past, and we're still paving more roads now than we really ever have in the past. Our goal is to pave 850 miles of roads, we're about 200 miles in, and this is over a 10-year period of time. Part of the issue in Sonoma County, and I said this probably when I was here in the past, is the number of miles of roads that we do have here. We happen to have an incredible amount of roads that are county-maintained, 1,384.6 miles, and if you're in Marin County, if you cross the border and you see that those roads are a little bit nicer, it's because they have 420 miles of roads, and we have That has a lot to do with the funding that road pavement comes from, primarily through the gas tax, which hasn't increased in about 18 years, so the dollars are worth about half of what they once were, and it gets allocated to counties, unlike cities, based on a formula that benefits those counties with larger populations and less road mile roads, and so it makes a, it's really a 75-25 split. It means that there's counties out there that get about 16 times as much as we do per lane mile, so it just means that we're under the gun to keep up. We're one county that has always put general fund dollars in, albeit admittedly, over the years, not enough. We fell behind, and it's hard to catch up, but we are moving in a direction that we will improve our roads. We have already improved our overall pavement condition index number by a few points, it's going in the right direction, so I just wanted to let you know that roads are still a priority. You know, we have lots of things on our plate, but roads are still a general fund priority going forward. And I know with Councilmember Landman here, I also want to make mention of Measure M, the importance of Measure M to our county. I think being a self-help county is extremely, extremely important, and I know that we're all under the gun for different sales tax measures over the course of time, but I just want to make note and put it out there, because people have been asking me, why don't we do another local roads measure, have it be a specific measure? We can't sacrifice Measure M. Measure M expires in 2024, it's bonded completely through on the freeway, on the SMART side, those funds, but we can't sacrifice not having a county-wide self-help measure, I believe, and I think about 2018 is going to be a year where it's going to be, we could really look at the dollars being less expensive in order to go out and re-up it and to borrow against, and I do want to keep that in mind, whatever we do in the future in terms of pavement. You know, the original measure had 40% of the measure going to the one-on-one widening. Now that we have the $120 million gap, as I like to call it, the $85 million piece through the City of Petaluma and the $35 million piece south of the Petaluma River, we only need only 30% going forward, or thereabouts, and so it frees up some of that measure's dollars that can go, among other things. I'm sure there'll be lots of people telling us where it should go, but it could go to local roads as well and increase that overall number, or transit or whatever, but I think that there's additional dollars there, we should keep that in mind too. And I know that, again, Councilmember Landman knows this, and the SETA did refund our bonds this last year, and we had $1.8 million in savings in debt service net of fees, simple lower interest rate, go for it, even with the cost of doing that, $1.8 million savings. That also enabled us to get quote-unquote $15 million of new money, which we hoped at that time to use as an enticement on that $35 million gap south of Petaluma. It turns out that the state has probably less money really than we do, which is a horrible thing to say in the transportation world, but that STIP fund, that State Transportation Improvement Fund, has at this point about $46 million in it. That fund usually has close to a billion dollars a year available. They're not giving out any dollars, that $46 million will probably be just used for cost overruns of jobs that are already underway. And the governor did have the special session, but nothing came out of that yet. There's different proposals out there, but all the proposals that were out there, both from the governor's office, the Democrats and the Republicans, really addressed the existing operating system and didn't address anything new with the STIP funds, they stayed with the shop. So a little frustrating for us locally that just want to get over the finish line and get the freeway widening complete, but we're staying after it, and certainly at the highway or the, you know, the federal level, the funding for the Highway Trust Fund is set to expire October 29th, right around the corner here. Congress continues to kind of punt 35 times since 2009, in fact, and it's been 10 years since Congress has passed a highway spending measure that's been longer than two years in time, so it doesn't look like anything will happen at the federal level significantly this year, certainly the state level's not going to happen, but locally we're poised to try to do something once things do free up, at least we're ready. Real quickly on SMART, I can tell you that Haystack Bridge is open, if you haven't seen that, it's operational, the train's been running over, in fact, I think it went over again yesterday. They're testing the trains down between Atherton and the Redwood landfill, there's a section of track there, about four, four and a half miles. I think it has one crossing, that's kind of why they're using that piece, they're testing the units themselves, getting them acclimated, getting the computerized pieces worked out. Work's advancing throughout the system, you'll see the platforms are actually going to be starting to work on those again, they've put the stem walls up, now they'll be putting the paving on top. I believe they're working from the south to north, so Kattati will be somewhere in the middle there, but that's right around the corner. And I could just tell you, from my personal perspective, we've been trying to work a deal, we have two different developers kind of penciling proposals for an Eastside Petaluma station. And I can tell you, a year ago, there was no talk of the Eastside Petaluma Station because there was no money for an Eastside Petaluma Station. As you know, that was originally in the proposal, it was taken out when they had a pullback on the overall system. But we do have two pieces, two developers who have two pieces of property where with a property exchange of the downtown piece that SMART owns, in conjunction with some other financial deals, with zero cost to the city and zero cost to SMART, trying to get that station, a called station, but it's really a platform, a platform in a parking area at either one of those stations are built going forward, so optimistic that one or the other will work. The city likes the one, and the one is in the city, and the other one is within the urban limit, it's right next to the city limit line. But I just hope you keep an open mind about getting the station up and running prior to the train running, because if it happens after, I can imagine that that cost of construction will be doubled, because the trains will be running every 15 minutes, and you have to build a new track, and the freight trains are going to be running a little later than that. So I throw that out there, just so you know. Real quickly on drought, there was a good article in the paper last Sunday about our drought. We've actually been, knock on wood here, all things considered, very lucky to get through this year. Lake Sonoma, as of last Monday, was 71% full, Lake Mendocino 56% full, which actually, all things considered, are not bad numbers for where we are, and that's really great because everyone, everyone has really conserved across the board. You know, the Water Agency typically sees about 65 million gallons of water passing through the system on a typical summer day, and this year it was about 45 million gallons. So great conservation all around, and very grateful for that, and it made that we can get through the year, and hopefully, with all the talk of El Nino, we can get some rain falling. And of course, with El Nino, as you all know, that's a hit or miss for Northern California. Many years, we've not done much better than without. Southern California receives the brunt usually of the rainfall of an El Nino event, but we're hopefully, you know, optimistic that we're going to be getting some of that. What's interesting in our area is that, you know, so much of it really matters about where that rain falls, literally, that we get these, and the Water Agency likes to call them atmospheric rivers now instead of storms, but these rivers that are actually very narrow bands that come across and really dump a ton of water, but if it falls downstream from your watershed and your reservoir, you don't get anything, and if it falls upstream, you can be golden. In fact, last year, Marin County had a storm that filled up every reservoir in the county, and one of the worst droughts in history. that's really great, because everyone, everyone has really conserved across the board. You know, the Water Agency typically sees about sixty-five million gallons of water passing through the system on a typical summer day, and this year, it was about forty-five million gallons. So great conservation all around, and very grateful for that. And it made that we can get through the year, and hopefully, with all the talk of El Nino, we can get some rain falling. And of course, with El Nino, as you all know, that's a hit or miss for Northern California. Many years, we've not done much better than without. Southern California receives the brunt, usually, of the rainfall of an El Nino event, but we're hopefully, you know, optimistic that we're going to be getting some of that. What's interesting in our area is that, you know, so much of it really matters about where that rain falls, literally, that we get these, and the Water Agency likes to call them atmospheric rivers now instead of storms, but these rivers that are actually very narrow bands that come across and really dump a ton of water. But if it falls downstream from your watershed and your reservoir, you don't get anything. If it falls upstream, you can be golden. In fact, last year, Marin County had a storm that filled up every reservoir in the county, and the, one of the worst droughts in history, really. They got a rainstorm that just gave them all the water they needed, just because it hit just right. So we are, with the Water Agency, doing some research with NOAA and with Scripps Institute out of San Diego to do some atmospheric testing and to try to really understand, in conjunction with the management of the dams, because right now, the dams are managed really out of a manual from 1950 that says if the water's at this level and there's a storm approaching, you let it all go. A few years back, that was the case. That storm never hit. We had let go twenty-thousand-acre-feet of water that you, at that point, can never get back. So we're trying to use best science to really make sure that we, you know, really understand the systems and really update things going forward. So there's some exciting stuff, actually, in the Water Agency going forward. With El Nino, I know I've gotten a lot of calls, and as I'm sure the city has, about getting prepared for this ensuing rainfall that hopefully we do get, but flood control, obviously, is always of interest, especially in our area. And I know the Zone 2A and the Water Agency has been really working as fast as they can up to the deadline, when they have to get out of the creeks and water tables, to really take and clean up as much as possible. I can tell you one good thing that I mentioned in Petaluma, the auction yard on Corona, which has kind of been a bane in my existence for a while, had some illegal fill on it that's been there for years and years and years, and just two weeks ago now, all that fill is gone. Worked that out with our code enforcement and to really make it work for the landowner, to make it happen, because no matter how much, you know, you get a lien and you have to wait for the property to transfer, and it doesn't remove the dirt, but it was really a way to make that happen, to move that over. So that was, that was some good news. I want to make mention, too, of a couple of things that happened here locally. A couple of land use pieces, tribal issues. Actually, tomorrow morning, I'm going up to Sacramento to chair a CSAC Tribal Committee, but the, we do have a nine-year moratorium on the no casino, actually, no taking of land into trust on the Dry Creek piece south of Petaluma. That, I think, is a good thing. It usually takes two to three years to take a piece of land into trust, so that essentially means that agreement is, gets us out to about twelve years, all told. I think that really gives us time, maybe not so much in Cattati, but really South County, to really deal in Petaluma, to understand what the tribe needs to have happen on that piece of land if they do go down the road of taking it into trust. If they take it into trust and it's not a casino, they can do anything they want and never have to talk to the local jurisdiction. And I don't think people really understand that. You see some of that coming out with the agreement that the county had with the Litten Tribe up in Windsor. And that, in my opinion, is a very good deal, not to have a casino in perpetuity within those areas. People just don't understand the nuances with a sovereign nation in your midst, and it's a, it's a, just makes things very unique, to say the least. And this, this past year, for myself, part of, by being at the state level, I've testified at the House Indian Affairs, actually, they renamed it, but, and at the Senate Indian Affairs on the, on these issues, and the local government. And our, our whole thing is to make sure that we have a place at the table, that we mitigate all off-site, off-reservation impacts, and that we have judicially enforceable agreements, not unlike we have with the compacts that we've agreed to here in California. But going forward, and you'll see, and it's interesting, as tribes want to diversify, which is a good business deal, they, you know, it creates other issues that you need to talk, talk to them about and to keep those open lines of communication. So I just throw that out there as well, because that's been in the news. And with that, Mayor Skolman, I am here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Well, I'll bring it back to the council. I'll turn to this side first. Councilwoman Deloso, any questions?
Thank you, Supervisor Rabbit. No questions, lucky for you, for me, this evening, but I do thank you for these occasional updates. It's really good to hear what's going on. Some of these issues do, on the periphery, impact us, and others don't, but I still think it's part of a larger system, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate that, too.
Thank you. Councilwoman Murphy?
No questions, but I echo, it's really nice to have you come periodically and let us know what's going on. We haven't always had that in the past, and it is really nice to know.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilwoman Landman?
Well, I appreciate the update as well, and I just think it's an important thing that came out a little bit, but we don't hear enough of. Actually, the county has inherited a very difficult task, where you stand in roads versus other counties, but the part that's missed often in the media and by a lot of us is, at least in the last couple of years, the significant amount of work you've done. I get the sense you guys have inherited a lot of deferred maintenance, kind of the way I felt I moved when I moved into my first house and had to take care of all that, and you're actually taking big steps to try and deal with it, and that's, and that's a good thing, because that'll save us all money down the road, so you're doing the responsible thing, and I think that's great. Pretty excited to hear about potential for another SMART station, cross our fingers and hope that both a good location and also serves the classic work, transportation, jobs, services, nexus, works out there, because if you can find that and make that work, it does make a lot of sense to save the money and do it now before the construction is done.
Right, right.
And I'll give you one last personal piece of credit for working hard, too. So after the long day that supervisors always spend, he was down at Petaluma doing this late last week, and not only did he stay into the evening, he stayed, and I didn't realize this, you actually listened to the whole RRWA presentation as well.
And I just want to say thank you very much. I very much appreciate the presentation, but I also appreciate the fact that you're going around to the cities to get the cities' buy-in, because many times, I'll be quite honest, people come to the county, looking for the county to buy in, and then go back to the cities, seeing that the county wants, you know, this particular issue. And I'm, as a council member, former council member, I'm very sensitive to the fact that sometimes the county is seen as imposing the county's will on cities when the cities have your own business to conduct. That's why I like coming here, to just tell you, here's things that we should keep our eyes out on and things that are happening. But I very much appreciate the fact that you're going out and gathering that support from the cities first, and then go to the county, not because it saves us a headache, but because it really means that it's, the cities want it going forward. We've had instances, I think, we all know this past year, where we've had things that the county wants to do, and we have, we have those things out there that we need to, you know, we're only, the supervisors are really, at the end of the day, have thirty-one percent of the entire county in their jurisdiction. The rest of it isn't incorporated. Not that we don't represent those citizens as well, but if you're talking about land use decisions, or you're talking about things that are more focused on incorporated cities, you know, sometimes it's good to put it in perspective, make sure that we're working hand-in-hand, not working at cross purposes and really understanding the workload that each entity have. And actually, today, we had, and I apologize for not having my tie on, but we had, I just, I came straight here from, we had a retreat at the Cundy Hill House. The board had a retreat for the last ten hours, and it was actually very productive. So it was a good, it was a good Tuesday, not a regular board meeting, but a good day to get a lot of work done. But I always appreciate being able, being able to come and speak before you, and like I always say, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, please give me a call, drop me an email, catch me where you can, and I very much appreciate the conversations.
I do. I have a couple of quick questions.
Thanks very much.
Thanks very much for giving us the update, Supervisor Rabbit. Couple of quick questions. You were talking about the renovation to the Vets Building in Cattati, and potentially looking at that kitchen. You're looking at that a couple of years from now, next year?
It'll probably be in the next, hopefully, hopefully, in the next funding cycle. It's not in this one, but in the future one. I, I can tell you that I personally question, and I'm not familiar, I've been in the building, and I don't think I've been in the, in the kitchen. What I understand, it's a replacement in kind of what's there, just outdated equipment with new, because it seemed like a lot of money to me, and I wanted to make sure that it's being used that way, because sometimes those buildings are used as catering kitchens more so than a full-scale, from-scratch food facility. Just wanted to make sure that we were doing that the right way. It's been an interesting conversation with the veterans on the future of those buildings. Again, you know, the Santa Rosa Building is a bit problematic. It has seismic issues. It has some roofing issues. It had water issues, HVAC, you know, it's old and it's larger. And, you know, part of the issue is, is that the right facility to serve the veterans the best, or could there be something else going forward? And how does that, and that building actually might be incorporated, not into the fairgrounds per se, but into the fairgrounds master plan that would allow additional resources, things like that. But we're trying very much to adhere to the promise of the veterans to have those buildings available and to keep them there for the future generations.
The maintenance on the particular Cattati building seems to be sometimes hit and miss, sometimes it looks great and other times it doesn't. Councilwoman Deloso and I, I think, will buy that each day as we come to and from home, so I see that quite a bit. The next quick question I had is, I wasn't familiar with where you were considering a platform on the east side of Petaluma for the SMART.
There's two locations. If you're familiar with the train crosses, it pretty much crosses McDowell in the very north end of the city, so there's not a lot of locations where you can actually put a station. The city had always designated the corner of McDowell and Corona. It would be the southeast corner as a, as a station facility. In fact, they, they identified that. They did a stationary plan about it. The stationary plan, to be honest, is a parking lot with a small commercial area. It's really not a apartments and so on. The other site that is being considered is, it's either, depending on how long you've been around, the Wicks Lumber Yard or the old Adobe Lumber Yard. Clover owned it at one time. It's on Old Redwood. It's the first property outside of the city limits, right before the bridge, and the backside there, the track is right there. Lagunitas will also have a spur line that will serve their facility, which will be a great thing. Right now, they actually unload their trains there, and they truck it about a quarter of a mile, which has to be a horrible, inefficient way to get the deliveries, but going forward. So it's really about, at the end of the day, there'll be, there'll be a dollar difference between those two sites compared to what the downtown's worth and what the platforms and parking lots can accommodate, and it's up to the board, obviously, the SMART board, to figure out how that works in the overall policy, and hopefully, we can work with the city and not have them, you know, have them on our side as well. I personally believe it's really important to get the ridership up prior to the commencement of service, have that there from day one. I also, as a SMART board member, believe that parking is important at the stations, and as much as we truly all want to believe everyone will bike or walk to the station, if you live outside of a quarter mile, we are in suburbia, people will want to drive to the station, park, and get on the train. If we offer too few parking spaces, people will just stay in their car and go to work like they always have, and we'll lose out ridership if we make sure that it's, there's abundant parking. Hopefully, we can attract more folks that way. Not to play down the fact that the transit connections need to work, and I know that we're all working on coordinating that as well, but I think we really want the system to work. We have to provide all sorts of ridership opportunities and convenience. I think we have a honeymoon period to attract that ridership when the system starts. I think it's important to get them on board then, show them how efficient and a great way it is go-to-work, and only over the course of time, then will the, generationally, will ridership increase, so we'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to Item Six, which is the introduction of our new K-9 unit, Remo, and I will turn to Chief Parrish for that.
Cheryl, and Officer Deaton, and Remo, please come up. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I would like to introduce you to Cheryl Walsh. She is the founder of the Sean Walsh K-9 Memorial Foundation. You've already met Officer Deaton, but you haven't met Remo yet, and that's Remo. We'll talk more about him in a minute. Cheryl's son was a police cadet who volunteered for the city of Santa Clara, and he was an Army National Guard soldier. He was in a military police unit in the San Jose area, and Sean's goal was to become a K-9 handler. The Sean M. Walsh K-9 Memorial Foundation is named in the memory of Army Specialist Sean Walsh. His family and friends founded, founded it in December of 2011, shortly after they learned of his death while serving in Afghanistan. The foundation received its nonprofit status in March of 2012. The mission of the foundation is to provide police dogs to law enforcement agencies in need. So far, the foundation has provided eleven dogs to law enforcement agencies, and one was in New York, that far away. So when we retired Coda, I selected Officer Brian Deaton to be our next K-9 handler, and it was actually Brian who reached out to the foundation. I did not know the foundation existed, but Officer Deaton did, so he gets the kudos for that. So out of, what, three-hundred-and-fifty police agencies in California, Cattati gets the dog, so we were very happy about that. So we got Remo. So Remo is a Sheppenwa, and I'm not making that up. He is half Belgian Malinois and half German Shepherd. So this is like a super mix of dogs, because those are the two top police dogs, and Remo is both. He's a Sheppenwa, which is pretty cool, and it's kind of a new trend. So he's eighteen months old, so he's young. You notice he's very, he's very tall, very tall and lean, but he still weighs eighty-three pounds, even though he's that lean. And he'll get a little thicker as he grows up, because he is young. Remo and Officer Deaton just completed ten weeks of K-9 training, so he's dual-purpose. He's narcotics and patrol, so he's a dual-purpose dog, because that's not always the case. Sometimes they're just patrol, sometimes they're just narcotics, but for a city our size, this is a good fit to have a dual-purpose K-9. Coda was also dual-purpose. So we're lucky to have a local trainer, and Frank's in the back. Where's Frank? Wait, Frank. So that's Frank Romano, and we're lucky to have him nearby. He's, his training center's about ten minutes from here, which is very convenient for us, saves us some money also to have a local trainer. Frank's the man when it comes to training dogs, so he's a retired Army Master K-9 trainer, and he's also a retired local California, or actually, state California, police officer, and in that job, he was K-9 handler also, so he really knows the business. He has certified Remo and Brian to be patrol and narcotic qualified. So Cheryl, I just wanted to tell you, we recognize Sean's sacrifice, and we appreciate this very much. This is huge, and our K-9 team's going to do great things, so thank you. I know you wanted to recognize a couple of people that are here. Can you do that now?
Yes. I actually brought with me two other board members, my partner in crime, Rolando Webby, and Sean's platoon and squad mate, Staff Sergeant Isabel Salazar from the Californian Army National Guard as well. She's one of our board members, and it actually will be, in twenty days, will mark the fourth year that we lost Sean. So it's incredible what we've been able to accomplish in just four years. And Officer Deaton, you know what? I kind of like that the handlers reach out to me, because it shows me that they're passionate. They're passionate about wanting to be a handler, because it's not an easy job. You know, it's a twenty-four-seven job. These, these dogs come home with them, you know, they, they ride with them, and I'm sure they let them know when, they'll let you know when he, you're not fulfilling your obligation to him. So I am honored. Cattati's situation is exactly why we exist, is to step in and help out when a special situation arises where the funding is needed, so thank you. I do have something, because we call the handlers and dogs one of Sean's canines, so we do give them an official K-9 shirt for the handlers and, oh, none for you yet. I have to tell you, we've met a lot of canines, and Remo is one of the best we've seen. Honest to God, he's a phenomenal K-9, and I just look forward so much to hearing the great things these two are going to do. They're a great team, so thank you.
Thank you.
So that's all I have, Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll bring it back to the council, and I'll go to my left this time. Councilwoman Landman?
Well, I think I'm going to say the same thing that all my colleagues will probably say, so the mayor gave me a break by letting me go first, and that's our sincere thanks to the foundation, all of you, for what you've done, for your help for this community. I'm struck that your son's goal was to help his community. That was what he wanted to do, and in a way, every time... And in a way, every time Remo helps us here in Katati, that will be a direct result of Sean. And that's not lost in us. We'll always remember that. So thank you very much for everything you've done this last four years and for bringing Remo to us. And Officer Deaton, thank you for stepping up. We look forward to seeing you two for years to come together.
Thank you.
May there be more.
Cheryl, thanks very much for your contribution and honoring your son that way. I think that's a noble cause. Katati is very appreciative of that, and I think it's terrific and keep up the good work. And thank you, Officer Deaton.
Thank you, Councilmember Delasso.
Again, yes, thank you, Cheryl, and Officer Deaton as well. I have a couple of questions for Remo, if now is the right time.
In Espanol.
Yeah, and actually, like the rest of the audience, he's not paying attention to me, so that's fine. I also want to thank Frank, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, but thank you for the work that you did. And it's very coincidental, my wife and I just adopted a rescue dog about three or four weeks ago, and we had to go all the way up to Reading, because there really are very few rescue dogs, which is a good sign, because 16 years ago, when we did this, dogs were everywhere. So maybe that's a good sign that they're harder to find. And that dog's name, you know how they always name the whole litter, was Remi. So maybe those two can meet, but she's like way small, so not right now. But yeah, we're looking forward to great things, and thank you both for the work you have done and the work you will be doing.
Councilmember Harvey.
Cheryl, thank you so much for taking what was a tragedy and turning it into something so positive. I can tell by looking at you that every time this happens, it is just something that gives you pleasure. And we just really appreciate that you have honored our city by making us part of your program. So thank you, and thank you for your son's service.
Thank you.
And that's the downside of going last, is that they've already said it all. So I just want to echo everybody's thank you and appreciation, and it's just, it's a wonderful memorial to your son that we get to think of him every time that Remo is serving our city. So thank you very much.
And thank you. And all of our board members were 100% volunteer. And so, and I always say, no donations are ever too small. So Remo is a result of nickels, dimes, quarters, dollars, and you name it. And it's just what we've instilled in people all over the country, is that pay-it-forward mentality. So we love to be able to share their accomplishments. So Remo is not just the pride of me, he's the pride of several thousand people, I'm sure. Not even Katati City, along with Katati City members. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and we'll let Remo get back to work. Thank you, Officer Deaton. Okay, so we'll move forward to approval of the final agenda. I'll turn to our city manager. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight?
There's no changes.
Okay, thank you. So our next order is citizens' business. I'll read my segment, then I'll, I think I've got one speaker card so far. Any members of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. And with that, I will move, I've got the one-speaker card from Ms. Lori Alderman.
Mr. Stanley is here tonight. I haven't looked back to see if anyone more. I have sent emails and said what I would accept to waive my restraining order against them, and I was not even respected enough to have that plan enforced that I leave with Mr. Landman when we have the conflict of interest, because he has a conflict of interest in this matter. And Chief Parrish will not, I asked him to enforce the restraining order before this meeting. He would not, because it's a Don Kletz order, and the only reason it was not a Kletz order was because Mr. Stanley wanted to keep his guns, and we respected that. That's the only reason. It is, I will be violating him on, if he continues to attend this city council meeting, I will be violating him in court over this. I went and I had to be sitting there, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm upset, obviously. To get this restraining order, I had to stand there and listen to them harass me, usually three to four to one, and I couldn't say a word in return. I had legally been advised. It is all in evidence, it's on video, it's on audio. That's the only reason why I won this restraining order was because of evidence. Everything I always have is evidence, and every time, you guys ignore it. And Chief Parrish, his police officers have been harassing me more than helping me. We haven't had police protection for 16 months because of him. This is inexcusable that he's allowed to, the Stanleys are again allowed to dictate how things happen in the city, and that you all don't respect the law at all.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Since I don't have any other speaker cards, so, yes, I'm sorry, don't your name?
So I didn't intend to speak, but I feel like that was rather personal. And I would just like to address why being my stepdaughter here. We're here to discuss our property and just, you know, the $35,000 that the city wants to charge us for not taking a structure down. I find it very flattering that Lori likes to make this about her. But, can you?
Please, you've had your three minutes. This is her three minutes of the citizens' comments.
So I just, I just want to make it clear that I think out of this whole situation, we've been doing nothing, especially myself. And I have emails to prove that I've been nothing but cordial to Lori. We've been doing the best that we can to...
You've had your three minutes. Ms. Alderman, if you continue to disrupt this meeting, thank you.
Yes, I really don't want to make this personal. You know, I'm just here to defend me and my family. And, you know, I'm sorry you have to deal with this, and I feel really embarrassed that I have to come up here and address this situation first and foremost. Just, depending on the emails that you get, just please keep in mind that we're doing the best that we can to make sure that she's accommodated. And I have emails to prove it, if you guys need it. So, and I also have emails to prove the fact that I told her to stop contacting me, and she hasn't, so.
Okay. Thank you for that. And we'll address this more when we get to item 10, which is the actual agenda item, so.
I'd like to speak.
Okay, you've got three minutes for the citizens' business. Feel free.
We have had absolute hell, and I don't remember exactly what date it is, but sometimes she'll not go with us. When one of the Stanleys said to me, "We will make your life hell if you do not get your daughter off my property." And in many ways, they have succeeded, because our life has indeed been hell. And we need a continuance of the restraining order. It was easily granted by Judge O'Nell when he heard all the facts, many of which are missing to you folks. And I want you to understand that we really desperately need for that restraining order to be continued. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment during citizens' business? And again, we'll get to your item two at item 10.
I apologize that it's come to this level, but it just came to mind that this is just a classic example of where our state and federal funds to mental health have fallen short. This is what we're dealing with here. It's a mental health issue, nothing that we wanted to be involved with. The Aldermans feel that they have been victims of something that is delusional. It was our house that burned down. It was our things that were lost, and they want to be the victim. This, I'm only here to conduct business. I didn't want to come up here and have to speak on any matters of this, other than what is the resolution and did the city of Katati get the proper information on whatever decision they made? Because we found that apparently the information trail has been interrupted through various attorneys and so on and so forth, and we were even not notified of the sale of the property. So that's pretty much what I have to say in regards to that. I just want to make sure that whatever decision was reached out there was based on all the correct information and the same information that we have. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in general on citizens' business? Yes.
I would like to point out, this is not an issue of mental health, it is an issue of the law. We have a restraining order. The restraining order was signed by a judge. There is documents behind it to back up the statement that a restraining order exists. It needs to be followed through upon. This is, again, not an issue of mental illness, but there is facts, and there is documented evidence of harassment by the Stanleys. The Stanleys might not want to hear this, but they had a good portion of causing this mess in the first place. Yes, they are victims, but they also made the situation worse. So please follow through with the restraining order. It's a legal document, it has a right to be followed through with.
All right. Yes, Mr. Parrish.
The council came out of closed session tonight with nothing to report. That's not very unusual, because they rarely have ever reported out of closed session. But there was an item in closed session which I think you should have reported on, and that was the fact, that the city of Katati was sued in federal court for violating my civil rights via the chief of police, and the city lost handily a large lawsuit. And this city was admonished and lectured at length during court about your complete disregard for the First Amendment and abridging people's civil rights. The city of Katati has spent thousands and thousands of dollars on legal expenses and have entered into a settlement agreement with me to pay me thousands and thousands of dollars for violating my civil rights. And the fact is, all I asked for was an apology. After the incident happened, I came before this council and asked for an apology, but this council could not bring themselves to apologize. Nobody could call me, nobody could come by my house, and I asked for an apology. When no apology came for months, I had to file a claim against the city, and this city stood fast and failed to take action to try to bring the parties together to avoid a lawsuit. And I say shame on all of you. You wasted the taxpayers' money, you've embarrassed the police department. How many other victims are out there in this community who have been subject to Mr. Parrish's orders that we cannot videotape or audiotape a police officer doing his duty in the course of our town? We don't know. And I think the city needs to put on the agenda this issue to ask the community, how many people have been victimized and bullied and intimidated and threatened with arrest for simply using their cell phones to record activities inside these chambers and out there on those front steps? You had that duty, but your egos and your political ambitions just couldn't, just got in the way, didn't they? Just got in the way. Yeah. Real funny, isn't it, Mayor?
I'm not laughing.
Well, you look like you're smirking, so, okay. But please, don't interrupt, okay? Thank you. The fact is, I read the mayor's declaration about what happened in these chambers the night of this incident, and it was full of lies and perversions, and you ought to be ashamed of yourself, okay? You ought to be ashamed of yourself to try to change what happened in order to relieve the city of liability. But even the court did not believe your lying declaration. And shame on all of you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to comment during citizens' business? All right, seeing none, I will close citizens' business, and we will move on to direction on future agenda items. So I'll turn to the council. Are there any future agenda items wishing to be added tonight? No? From this side?
From this side.
Okay, I think we're good then. So now we will move on to the consent calendar. And for that, we'll turn to, is Norm doing a presentation, or do we just?
So there's no presentation on that unless...
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll see, are there any questions from the council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Do I need to open the public comment? Don't I need to open a public comment before we move on the consent?
If you want to, that's fine. If nobody wishes to.
Oh, that was part of, okay. Thank you. I'm a little off my game, apparently, tonight. So I will say that we've got a motion and a second on the consent calendar item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, may the record reflect, that's a 5-0 vote in favor of the consent calendar item. So we'll move on to the regular agenda items, and the first one is item eight, ratification of nominees for appointment to the Measure G Citizen Oversight Committee.
So thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you'll recall, in June of last year, Katati voters approved Measure G and amended Katati Municipal Code 3.05, extending the city's existing Measure A sales tax and setting it at 1% for nine years. And part of that measure was annual audits and an independent citizens' oversight committee. So subsequently, on September 8th of this year, the city council adopted a resolution establishing a five-member Measure G Citizen Oversight Committee, modeled after the planning commission selection process, which is also codified in the municipal code and included in the staff report. The call for, the call for applications was put out by the city, and in the staff report, you will see five nominees in the report. I believe all five nominees are here tonight, if there's any questions of any of the nominees. But with that, I'll just say that the, with all the nominees that have been nominated, the council, thank you, the council would then move forward and ratify those nominees tonight. So that's, that's my short staff report on this item. Thanks.
Okay, so I'll bring it to the council members. Did you have any questions for staff or for the nominees at this point?
No questions right now, thank you.
I don't have any questions. I do have some comments I might make, but we can wait till after the ratification.
Okay. On this side, same thing?
No, I would just say that the nominees that are here, if you wanted to welcome them up to the podium, if they want to say anything.
What was I going to say?
Not that they have to, but if they want to.
Okay. So of the five nominees, if there's anybody who would like to come forward, we've got Ariane Esquie, and forgive me if I mispronounce any of these, Ken Savano, Yvonne Van Dyke, Suzanne Whipple, and Amy Lyman. You're welcome to come forward at this time, if you would like to.
I think just because I've sat here and listened to all these other comments, I'm one of the original persons that started the Measure A. I started it pretty much by myself until the city council got involved. I've been waiting a long time to be able to oversee this money. We've waited a long time for a rec. department. We've waited a long time for some things. The police department has been able to expand, and I would really like to see where these monies are going that we've been paying for, for quite a few years now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else who would like to come forward? Okay, then I will bring it back to council. And I'd see, would anybody like to make public comment on the ratification of the nominees? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment, and now we'll bring it back to council for a vote.
Do you need individual votes, or is one?
No, just one motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the nominees for the Measure G Oversight Committee.
Second?
As presented.
And before we vote, just a quick point of comment. I wanted to wait last to public comment. I'd like to thank everybody for being involved in this. Probably toughest committee to be on is the sort of advisory committee. You get all the work of a business-making decision or a regular board of directors, little of the authority, other than that. Heavy responsibility once a year to weigh in. So I see a lot of different people involved here, but all coming with the same good perspective to take a good look at this and be supportive and helpful in making sure this works well. So thank you for... So thank you for volunteering your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record reflect, it's a 5-0 vote in favor of ratifying, ratifying the council members' nominees for appointment to Measure G Citizen Oversight. So thank you all in advance for your time.
And if I may, Mayor Eskim, and I'd like to thank all of the nominees and those that applied that were not part of the final selection process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item nine, which is the review incumbent on the Veronda-Falete Ranch pathway and picnic area. And for that, I will turn again to our city manager, Damian Obed.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So back in 2008, the city and the Sonoma County Ag and Open Space District executed a matching grant agreement and an easement deed agreement where the district assisted in the acquisition of the Veronda-Falete Ranch across the street from City Hall. In exchange for that, the Open Space District conveyed a conservation easement over the entire property, which preserves it for open space, recreation, education, agricultural, natural resource, and scenic values. And then the city's responsibilities include improvement of the property to make it more accessible to the public and conducive to its intended purpose, public open space, and long-term maintenance of the property. On August 6th of this year, the design review committee reviewed the project and recommended approval of the preliminary and final design review, with a couple of comments that are noted in the staff report. One being, if possible, adding a bottle-filling drinking water fountain similar to what's at Putnam Park and also in the Plaza Park, similar style of that. And then also provide one ADA-accessible picnic table, which I'll get into in a moment about the actual proposed site design. And then in September of this year, the planning commission reviewed the project and approved preliminary and final design review and made findings of consistency with the city's general plan. In addition to the previous recommendations by the DRC, the planning commission also asked that the path material be fresco color, which is like a light, a light brown, almost a tan color to the pathway. And the project itself is a, is a pathway from the corner of East School Street and West Sierra, where the sidewalk currently ends around the corner of El Rancho and to where the sidewalk ends on El Rancho. So basically, the entire south and west side of the property with a, with a new picnic area, a public picnic area on the corner of El Rancho and East School, East School Street, as well as a pedestrian crosswalk to the civic center to provide that connection to our civic center facilities. In addition, the project would include new fencing, new perimeter fencing around the property to enclose whatever future agricultural use might be programmed there. And this is considered phase one of the project. So phase two is, is the preservation of the structures. And we have a structural report that we're finalizing right now, a structural assessment, which would then roll right into structural upgrades to the various structures on site to keep, to preserve them for the long, for the long term. And then, you know, as part of the, the long-term site programming, we're also, we're also going to be partnering with somebody at some point, hopefully in the near future, to be able to operate the site after some of these site upgrades have been completed. But in the short-term pending discussion tonight, the next step on this first phase would be to finalize the design and put it out to bid. And it would bid this winter and then be constructed in the spring. So we're talking about a fairly near-term project to start opening up public access on the property. And the specific action that we're looking for tonight is just to review and provide comments on the proposed pathway and picnic area. And then adopt a motion approving the design and text of the interpretive sign, which, I apologize in the packet, there's a, there's an issue with the PDF generator that causes it to look like gobbledygook, but actually doesn't look like that in reality. And we've provided the printouts, both in the back and also at the dais. So anyone can look at that if, if they're wondering why the one in the staff report looks a little odd with the fonts and font sizes. And I will add just one more thing. So with the approval of the, of the design and text of the interpretive sign, assuming that's approved by council tonight, we would take it forward. And in final production, we would make last-minute adjustments to layout, just to actually produce the sign panel. But what you see is substantially what would, in terms of all the design elements, what would actually be printed on the interpretive sign, which would be actually installed as part of this first phase of the project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to council. Any questions for staff at this point? From this side? Yes, Councilmember Lyman.
First of all, no questions about the plan itself for the park. I think that's going to be great. I think that'll look very nice. I think combining that with the work that's been done over, the really nice work that's been done on the basketball court is going to be a big upgrade for this neighborhood and a well-deserved one, so happy about that. As far as the PDF, wanted to thank you for that, because when I looked at the PDF, I wasn't sure what's going on. And now I see the printout, it's all good. And, you know, this, this happens with digital stuff, so I'm glad to see that. I think this looks great. I think the text, the message is right on target. I think the design concept's all good. Any last-minute checking of PDFs or touching of these happening, at this point, it's all been done so thoroughly, I'm sure that can be handled in print. So I'd like to thank Councilmember DeLasse, who actually understand did most of the legwork in making that happen for that sign. So, very nice. And the question I wanted to ask, though, the structures, assessment in the near future, how soon do we think near future might be? And do we have an assessment, a guess, a rough guesstimate of what condition they're in? Will they be ready to be used in any fashion, do we think, anytime soon? Or do we think there'll be some more investment to be done first before we can put them to use for the public?
So we have a, we had a draft structural assessment, and we're getting the final version, hopefully, very shortly. And what we'd asked them to look at, because we didn't have a, a final program to use in terms of, in terms of public occupancy of the various structures. So the focus of the structural assessment was to make sure that, that they were improved, improved so that they would remain intact for the long term. And then if in the future, and if in the future there was some programmed use inside the structures, like in other words, the public was entering these structures, then we'd have to look at that specific use and see if there's any further improvements needed for accessibility and that sort of thing. But, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the structures were, I mean, it's, it's an old ranch, old ranch structures, and they were built with what was available at the time. But they're not necessarily some, they're not structurally sound for the long term. So quite a few improvements around those areas.
I can see where that makes a lot of sense, particularly for the ranch structures. I was thinking of the little house, too, which seems to be probably more a question of putting that to some use. So I see the difference between maintaining it long term. So looking forward to here, see what we find. We'll cross our fingers and hope that they're in better shape than we might have guessed. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Moore?
I did. Thank you. I had some questions on the path coming down East School Street. The path would hook up with the existing sidewalk that is partially there?
Right, yeah, the sidewalk on School Street that, that ends right here at the corner of West Sierra.
Right past the sewer, or whatever that is right there?
It would actually, it would actually go to the, to the corner.
Okay.
Because some of that, some of that work related to the open ditch, as it transitions to a, to a open storm drain, or to a closed storm drain system, it didn't lend itself well to a transition. So there'd be a little rework right there with storm drainage to bring the path to the curb ramp.
Okay. So then the path would actually go right to the corner and connect with the sidewalk going on West Sierra?
Right, yes. You'd have a, you'd have a traditional concrete apron for the curb ramp itself. And then immediately west of that, as you go along School Street, it would transition to this, what, it looks, the aesthetic appearance is like a decomposed granite path, like a light, you know, aggregate path.
Where do you envision the signage on this, these interpretive signs? One at the corner of El Rancho and East School Street? Or, I mean, yeah, West Sierra?
I think that's something that we could take input on tonight from the council. The exact placement, we hadn't really, Councilmember DeLasse may have ideas. I think the most logical spots in my mind would be at the main gate on West Sierra next to the house or close to the house. Or a good alternative location would be in the picnic area. Either one of those would probably get the most readership.
Okay, so no thoughts potentially to any signage on West Sierra and East School Street?
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that the easement allows for unlimited interpretive signage, so long as they're smaller in size, less than two square feet. So we, at the end of the programming of the site, when we actually have activities going on and people in the interior of the property, we can put as many signs as we think is necessary, and they can change as programming changes over the years and stuff. This one, in my mind, is sort of the, the base and the most important to give people an idea of the property as a whole. So it's, it's one, or we could actually put two of these up if the council wanted. We could put two of the same signs up and replace it with something more specific later. But we are unlimited in that regard.
The reason I ask is because when I looked at this, I don't know that there was, and I was reading through this, there wasn't a provision necessarily for lighting in that area at all. So I think that there should be at least some lighting, especially on the corner of West Sierra and East School Street. And if you had a smaller sign there, then it would also allow for better identification of where this particular open space district is. And it would also light a really poorly lit corner right there. So I think it would be twofold to put some sort of lighting there, even if the interpreted, or even if the signage was a small, less than two feet. But then they could clearly see the path and the demarcation to the entrance. So that would be my comments on that.
Just to add to the information, the, we are obligated under the terms of the conservation easement to keep the big sign or a version of the large-scale sign that's out there now that denotes it as open space district partnership. The design of the pathway actually, as Damian said, the, the main circulation path takes you near the curb edge as a traditional sidewalk. And then there's a break point where you can actually go back closer to where the fence, the fence in that corner will be moved back to, for enhanced landscaping at that corner. And so that sign, the idea of that was to not only enhance that corner, but to also bring the pathway back so that that, so people could read that signage and understand it more. So I'm not, I hadn't thought about the lighting there, but just so you know what all's going on at that corner.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I just would like to add on to Vice Mayor Moore's concerns. That was the one thing that struck me was about the lighting. So it, particularly around where the picnic tables are, and then if we're going to have a path, and the path, because it's not, you know, like hard sidewalk, I would think that lighting would, would be important, be it, you know, lighting like the lights over by McGinnis, you know, so you can kind of walk through it. A different kind of path than, you know, a regular sidewalk. So I really appreciate the drinking fountain. That was something I was going to ask for, so I was glad that Design Review asked for that. But I am concerned about lighting.
So now I will, if that concludes questions and comments at this point, then I'll open up for a public comment if there's anybody who wanted to comment on the Veronda-Falete Ranch pathway and picnic area project. Yes, Mr. Verge?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the staff for a, a nice report here. However, it's virtually impossible for the citizens to follow along on what you're, what you're discussing here. I thought we spent thousands and thousands of dollars on this great new technological improvement here at the City Hall to use the large screen, to use the video projector, to use the PowerPoint presentation so we can follow along with a digital clock on the screen that was supposed to show us how many, how long we were speaking and so forth, and we would know when to, when we needed to stop. And it's really a disadvantage for the public not to have used that. I would like to see maybe in a city manager's report coming up, why we're not using all this technology that we were promised, because it would help us follow along. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on the project? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for a vote.
Is he talking?
I don't know. I think he's looking for the language.
Are we ready for a motion?
No. No, there's comments to be made. I thought you were looking for something because you had a comment.
I was thinking we were doing comments, and then I heard a motion, and I saw you there, so I was getting back to the motion.
Yes, comment, please.
Thank you so much. So just addressing the issue of lighting, if it's lighting for pedestrian safety, I think that's fine. Lighting as a secondary issue for signage, you know, typically, typically, signage like this is produced as people are walking around during the daytime hours to read. They're not really, they typically, they never are lit. Doesn't mean they can't be. But I think if, if lighting is the issue and it's related to pedestrian safety on a path, that's a whole separate issue. And yeah, I think that's something that could be looked into. I will also say that items such as this natural pave or terrapave, I know we've used some of those in the past, and be careful with the coating that goes on them. When you don't coat them, they don't last as long. And coating them with like a pine pitch, I think there's, there's, whatever. You guys will figure it all out. I trust you on that. But I would just say caution to the wind and look about some kind of a sealant that goes on them, or else you get weeds coming through them. But it's, it's no different than concrete. It's an accessible path. It's approved by, you know, through ADA. But it's a much more natural path. And it, it's great stuff, and it lasts, I mean, right now, I can think of an example that's lasted for over 18 years and still functions like it did day one. So, so lighting, I would just say, if lighting's an issue as far as movement of pedestrians, that's a whole separate issue. I wouldn't worry about lighting for signage, just to throw that out. If it's a secondary benefit, the lighting does both, that's fine, I suppose. So I just wanted to say that. For those who couldn't see the, the image, I did bring a couple of 11-by-17s that are pinned up on the wall over here, just to get an idea. That's sort of what I've called the final draft. We can certainly make some changes still. I know people have commented on the, the two logos. And I'm still working with Ag and Open Space to see if I can get a better logo, because their letters literally go to the edge and then kind of bleed off. I don't know why they do that. And, and, you know, that, that's a current logo for the City of Cattati, which we could use if we ever get one that's transparent background. That would be way cool, and it would work much better. So, and just to point out a few other things, that's not the final size of the signs. Obviously, a little bit larger, but the, the size completely escapes my brain right now, even though I've been working on this for two years. And the fonts are all of legal ADA size, including the photo captions. They're a minimum of 18-point in a non-sera font. Not that anybody really wants to get into the detail, I know, but it's coming out there. And furthermore, one last item, the white background around the text is a 70% contrast, which again, is an ADA standard. So I think we've met that part. And then the mounting in the frame, you know, those will be put at a specific angle and height. So if somebody were in a wheelchair, they'd be able to clearly read this entire signage. So just wanted to throw those things out there. And there was a, a number of people that were involved, certainly in the narrative part, that have done a lot of editing over time. And I just, thanks to all of them, I'm not going to list them all here tonight, but thanks to everybody.
All right, any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Lyman?
Yeah, just wanted to weigh in on the light issue, too, because I had some similar thoughts, as well as my colleague over here. It's an interesting issue, because typically, we want to make sure we have good light for people to use and to walk particularly, obviously, in the evening. But at the same time, if we look at each neighborhood, they all have different needs. And this is certainly a kind of a rural agricultural area, and we certainly don't want to lose that look. I'm thinking in my particular neighborhood, some And a sizable amount of the people in the neighborhood who were here said, actually, no, we live there and we really don't. And the council went, oh, okay, fair enough, you know, we don't need to do that. So, I would suggest that maybe we can assess it. Now, what we'll have going in obviously will be served by the existing light, we can certainly assess that. If we find it's lacking, we do have a standard that, we have new lights that we're putting at some of the parks already, that could be put into play, it would probably work very well. So, I think we can encompass both things without having to jump ahead and put extra lighting in right now, just a suggestion. Other than that, I'd be happy to move this, I think it's a great project.
All right, anything further? All right, then I will ask to see if there's a motion.
Madam, I'd like to move that we approve the design and the text of the interpretive sign for the Veronda Fletti Ranch. And I think that's it, we've provided comments and reviewed, so all that's left is approving the design and text. So, that's my motion.
Second? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? May the record reflect that's a 5-0 vote in favor of the design and text of the interpretive sign.
Excuse me, Mayor. Just to make sure I'm clear on the, on the issue on the lighting. So, is the, is the direction from the council that we just evaluate the lighting, the existing lighting there, and if it's found to be substandard or insufficient for a typical neighborhood? Is that what I'm hearing?
Secretary General.
I'd be okay with that, an evaluation of whether we need more lighting. I, I don't know without walking out there right now how much lighting is there, and when you move the fence, and I know there's trees there, and, you know, how much lighting is, since there's no sidewalk, you know, just an evaluation, especially since we're going to put picnic areas out there and there, that may bring others in the evening.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And since we've been here for about two and a half hours, I would ask that we take a quick adjournment for five minutes, and I would ask the council members to be back at the dais at 8:40. Thank you. And we'll turn to item number 10, which is a progress update on the 601 West School Street property, and for that I will turn to Vicki Parker.
Madam Mayor, before we begin, I wonder, since I live within 500 feet of the property and might reasonably be financially affected by any property values in the area, I think I need to recuse myself. So, excuse me.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. As you, as you stated, we're here tonight to update the council on the progress of an item which was, which first came before you on August 25th of this year, and that is the abatement of a public nuisance at 601 West School Street. The nuisance that I'm referring to was the habitation of a structure that was unpermitted for occupancy, the removal of that structure as well as the foundation remains of the former primary structure, which had been lost in a fire, and removal of the debris. The staff report had recommended a deadline for the abatement of September 28th, which was the minimum time, the 30 days was the minimum time allowed to be imposed by the city's municipal code. Just prior to the hearing on August 25th, the property owners provided evidence that they had secured housing and had ceased habitation of the accessory dwelling on site, so that partially abated the public nuisance content. At the hearing, they requested an extension of that September 28th deadline in order to continue settlement talks with their insurance carriers so that they could enable the abatement. Staff recommended that that extension be granted, so the council, after deliberations, voted to direct the property owners to abate the remaining conditions of the nuisance and did extend the deadline by 60 days to November 28th to enable settlement talks with the owner's insurance company. And in addition, the council asked for tonight's update on the progress. The current status of the property on August 18th, a notice of trustee sale was recorded against the property advising that the owners were in mortgage default, and that if not brought current, the property would be sold at auction. The default was apparently not brought current and the property was indeed sold at auction on September 29th, and is now owned by the Bank of New York Mellon and listed for sale with a local Realtor. Next steps that would be pursued by staff would be in order to provide the new owner with all of the required noticing and their rights under the municipal code. We do have to begin the process again. The new owner must be noticed in accordance with all the land use code, municipal code procedures and timelines, and have the opportunities to abate the nuisance. So, staff has identified the contact information for the new owners, has reached out to them as well as to the Realtor, and will be pursuing that through to completion. Hopefully, the bank will be, a friendly abatement can occur with the bank. If that doesn't happen, we'll be back in front of the council with the same basic structure that we brought to you on August 25th, which is to authorize the abatement proceedings and affixing of a lien in case the city has to go forward with the abatement. So, at that time, that's, that's our update. As I said, we'll be pursuing it and giving you progress updates as we go, if you're interested in the specifics. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Do you have any questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
So, how long do we have to wait to see if they friendly abate before we start the process all over again?
I would estimate that the total process is probably around 75 to 90 days. There are several minimum time periods that are set forth in the land use code between the notices, and then a minimum of 30 days after the council action to allow them to abate before the city starts. So, in all practicality, it's in that 90-day range.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is nothing that we can do to be on that property because it's owned by someone else?
That's true, and I'll let the city attorney add to this if she feels the need to, but that is true. The new owner, because the deadline hadn't been reached and the city had not abated on our own and therefore affixed a lien to the title, the new owner is theoretically unaware that the nuisance exists and that the abatement was ordered by the council. So, they have to be given an opportunity to cure it.
Thank you. Did I answer your question or comment? Okay, anything, yes, Vice Mayor Moore?
I do have a couple of questions. Thank you, Ms. Parker. On the transfer of that title from the previous owner to the new owner, the knowledge of the abatement, pending abatement and cleanup is well documented?
It's well documented at our level. There was nothing recordable against the title of the property, so nothing in the public record beyond our public record, if that makes sense, so nothing.
So, the new owner may not have even been aware of that situation, although I would imagine if they were looking at selling a foreclosed property or purchasing a foreclosed property, they would have some idea of what that particular situation might look like?
The, I would assume that it may have been in a package of properties that were bid on that day. I don't know that for a fact, of course, but that may be typically the way it happens. So, there was nothing recorded on the title report, or on the title that would show up in a title report of the property. So, the local, or the real estate agent who has obviously been on the property should definitely be aware. A fire and the burning of the structure is a disclosable item under California real estate law. So, we, as I mentioned, have reached out to that agent to make sure that they're representing the property properly. They have not returned those attempts to contact us yet.
That was my next question, was what was the outreach to those new owners, and have they been in a position where they have understood that there's a sense of urgency in light of pending weather, and they haven't done any of that?
Well, our, our attempts so far, we just began that last week, and they're, the Bank of New York Mellon has, I'll call it a process server, I'm sure, process agent, so it has to go through them, and I'm sure it's going to take some time to get to the right person. We've also been contacted by an agent of theirs who's in charge of utility debts, and so there, there's now another entity that we can advise of the situation. So, we'll begin all that required noticing, and we have the legitimate party to notice, and it'll just be a matter of marching through the process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, the only thing I was going to clarify with our city attorney is that tonight we're just receiving and filing the information on the update, we're not actually voting on anything, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so if we're done with questions and comments for staff, I'll open it up to public comment, and I have one public comment card from Ms. Alderman.
I'd like to apologize for my earlier outbursts, that has to do with harassment. They, the Stanleys like to, they call me publicly, they call me mentally ill, they call me retarded, and they say nothing happened to our property. I have a master's degree, so I'm definitely not retarded, I am not mentally ill, I never have been, that's their, and we had over $90,000 worth of damage to our property, which the Stanley has not paid any of their liability costs to any of the neighbors, and they didn't have regular insurance, they had forced lender mortgage insurance because their house was in default. So, I am supposed to be able to read my whole statement, so I hope you do. Okay. First, I challenge whether there is even a need for the Stanleys to give a progress report on 601 West School Street property. The property was sold at a trustee's sale on September 9th, or 29th, I haven't got that one, and finally officially recorded on October 2nd. As the resolution was passed on August 25th, the extension is, that document is based on the Stanley's request for time to secure financing for demolition of the property ruins and building. This reason for the extension was voided when the property was sold, which the Stanleys knew on August 18th, a week before the public hearing that was held on August 25th, that the date of the trustee's sale would be September 9th. After September 9th, in my opinion, the resolution should have been voided due to the, voided and repealed due to the property no longer being owned by the Stanleys. The abatement process is delayed because of focusing on the Stanleys rather than on the reality of the situation. The Stanleys completely, completed no work on the property or applied for a J permit from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which would have been the first step in the permit and demolition process. There was no noticing of an adjacent infected neighbors of a demolition schedule as required. Obviously, the Stanleys had no intention of baiting the property. The Stanleys knew of their foreclosure trustee sale at the August 25th public hearing, as their notice of trustee sale was dated August 18th. They knew at the hearing that the foreclosure auction would be happening approximately two weeks later. The foreclosure on their property was desirable over completing an abatement or demolition as they could walk away from the property with little consequences. Because it was a foreclosure, they don't need to disclose the probable contamination of their soil. They were able to be excused from their loans, which were at least $100,000 more than the property was worth, even with the house intact. Currently, they will not pay for the abatement demolition costs because the foreclosure of approximately, of $35,000 as property taxes would be the responsibility of the new owners at the next tax cycle.
Well, and Ms. Alderman, I wanted to let you know too, this has already been incorporated in our packet, so you don't have to worry about reading all of it if it's, if it's too much tonight.
I still would like to read as much as I can. The city facilitated the Stanleys in their ability to wait almost 15 months since the fire and explosions for the foreclosure to take effect. There is no such legal document as a temporary occupancy permit, especially one for a one year in duration. And this morning I sent you and the council all the building codes on this. There is no, the most with a state marshal office, state, sorry, office of the state fire marshal is 60 days for a damaged building.
Okay. We've gone about a minute and a half over, so if we could just wrap up.
I asked repeatedly to be able to read my whole statement as much as I wanted, and I would like that. I have not been respected for a whole year, I would like to be respected.
And that's why I'm wanting to let you know, it's already incorporated in the record, so you don't have to worry about reading.
I know, but I would like to speak it, because not everybody's going to.
I'll give you one more minute to wrap it up, please, thank you.
I don't think that's very fair.
You've already had four minutes, so please continue.
We're one of the property owners, and you declined, sorry, I'm not going to accept that. You, at the August 25th meeting, wouldn't allow my brother to read his statement, my statement, and to give his other time, so we've already been limited, and here you're doing it again. You just want to keep limiting us of being able to tell our side.
Everybody who came got three minutes, so please continue, if you want to take the extra minute, please go.
I have enough.
All right, thank you. All right, and I don't have any other comment cards, but if, I'd like to see if there's any other comments. Yes, Mr. Berch?
Mayor, the three-minute time constraint that you put on the public is a state minimum, and I believe the Attorney General has said five minutes, so it's a bare minimum. I don't understand what the council's hurry is tonight. You've signed up for this job to represent the city, and, you know, we don't have a packed house here tonight, we're not going to go till midnight tonight. Mrs. Alderman has been through so much, I don't understand the, the firm time constraints that you're putting on her under everything that she has been through and also the Stanleys have been through. The sad part about all of this for me is I see this whole fiasco to be a huge failure of leadership from day one. I have followed the emails, I've followed the oral discussions about this here, the council I felt, feel has not really reached out as I thought that they would in a situation like this, this is such a personal matter, of such a huge catastrophe for a resident and the neighboring, neighboring residences there. I just haven't seen the city leaders reach out, let alone staff, to do their job properly. I think the police are not doing their job, and they haven't done their job in this case, regardless of what the chief says, oh, we're doing our job, you know, we're getting the job done, you know? Well, I don't see it. The fact here is, I have been to every one of these meetings since this issue began and waited for the Stanleys to come forward, and I wanted to be here for them in case they needed any additional help, and, you know, they have, it doesn't sound like they've gotten the help from you. Ms. Alderman and her family have not gotten the service and the leadership that they expected from you. And what did Mr. Landman do about all this after the fire? He went up to the house and asked if he could put one of his campaign signs in the front yard of a burnt down house. I mean, I couldn't believe it, you know, trying to take advantage of the situation, you know, I just, I just could not believe it. Didn't have the heart to go up there and bother the Stanleys in that situation that they were under. But the Stanleys knew that I was there in case they needed them, and I was down here in case they needed anything else to stand up for them as well, and the Aldermans. You know, it's just, you guys have really just dropped the ball on this. It's just sad to see this, and then now here in the 11th hour, to see Ms. Alderman rushed and emotionally battered that the mayor is that the mayor is engaging in, I just don't understand it. This is not the type of situation you want to engage in. This is a very, very sensitive matter for the Stanleys and the Aldermans. And your callous disregard to try to get home, to watch your soap opera that you taped today, you know, it's just, it's just really frustrating.
Alright, thank you for that. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment?
Do you have any follow-up?
Yes, please.
I don't even know how I can follow that up. George, I appreciate your acknowledgement, and I don't think you need to put so much blame on the city. I mean, they've done what they could do within their parameters. But it's Aldermans, and Lori in particular, that have exacerbated this issue. The stories of us calling her retarded, mentally ill, whatever, it was her brother that was here last week or last session, and that said, excuse me for my sister's mental illness, okay? It's on the tape. Why are we even subject to this BS right here, is what I want to know. My house burned down. I lost everything, okay? Tragedy. These folks lost also. They're victims, but they want to be like, it's a race or a contest. We're more of a victim than you are. 1,600 emails to you guys, all the agencies. Just the abuse of resources that she's put on everybody, you know? It is ridiculous, and you're ridiculous.
Let's not, let's focus on the issue. Thank you.
The fact that you even have to listen to me talk right now is ridiculous. This should have never gotten to this level. This is very personal, and everybody has just, you know, the community rallied behind us when we first lost our home. The community's awesome here. But you've got one person that's a bad seed and can turn this into a carnival. And to think that losing your house and all your possessions is bad, try dealing with her. So, that's about all I got to say.
Alright, thank you. And, um, would you like, would you like three minutes?
Excuse me. There's a few things I'd like to say. First of all, I am getting letters from my own insurance company, California AAA, who inform me that every time they try to contact the Stanley family, they cannot get so. They are going to sue them under their rights of subrogation for the damages to our house. They have tried to reach their insurance company, and again, no reply. They told me that they have referred the matter to their special subrogation department. Yet, Mr. Stanley and Mrs. Stanley act like they know nothing about all this. This is incredible, because I myself have received three letters on this subject within the last year. I might also like to add that during the first month, a friend of mine who is a lawyer in her own right informed me that the Stanleys were bad maffing us all over town. And I had to make a decision at this point whether I would do the same, and I chose not to, because it is not my style. But now, I bitterly regret it, as there is very definitely a side that has never been discussed. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for that. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment? Yes.
I don't want to comment, but just in terms of what we were here for in the first place, it sounds like, at this point then, you guys are going to be working with Bank of New York Mellon. Are we still involved, or, because I feel like there's, that's all I want to know.
I can turn to Vicky Parker if she wants to comment on that, but my understanding is that it is.
Because that's one problem down, and then we can move on. That's all I want to know.
So, through the mayor, I believe that staff will be noticing and working with the bank and the bank's agents. I don't know that there is any immediate action that would be taken against the Stanleys because you no longer own the property. There may be some communication between the bank, as the new owner and you, or the real estate agent, that will not involve the city.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. So, we can move on now.
Thank you.
In some ways. Alright, yes, sir.
I want to clarify a comment that was stated earlier. I never stated my sister has any form of mental illness. My recollection of that day was, because of both the restraining order and my sister emotional status, emotional status does not mean mental illness, I thought she was not able to read on that day. That is what, that is what I said at the time. So, to refer to my sister as having mental illness is incorrect. I want to remind again that the harassment of the Stanleys by my family has been documented in those visual, audio, and other, and written testimony. It's not my sister's imagination. It is fact. So, we will, I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And seeing no further public comment, I will close public comment on the issue. And there's nothing for us to vote on. We're just receiving and filing the information. So, thank you for the progress update.
May I ask just one last question of staff, if I could?
Of course.
So, if there is a timeline right now of when, depending on when contact is made with the new owner, the Newark Bank, what kind of a rough timeline could we get some new and relevant information back to us? You had mentioned some 60-day period, but I just want to be clear on that.
I believe what I said was probably around 75 to 90 days. That's, that's my best estimate on following all of the noticing requirements. So, that would be the point, that we would either be back to you with the same resolution that we brought on August 25th, or more happily, a report that, that an abatement was in process.
If there's, I don't know that we're going to take a motion on this. This is obviously not of what I'm about to say. But if there's any way, just from my standpoint, if there's any way staff could encourage the other parties, the current owners of the property, to expedite the process, I think it would behoove all of us.
Yeah, I think, you know, we will, we're going to move to, to start all the official legal timelines as soon as possible. Hopefully, it's, like as Vicky said, it's a friendly abatement, but we're not going to wait on initiating the legal timeframes. We're not going to have a period of talking before we even start that, so.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Did you have something?
No, I was just going to reiterate what John was saying. You're going to impart a sense of urgency on them.
Okay. And since there's no vote, then we will close that item and move on to the item number 11. And I would ask, would you go get a thank you await from Councilmember Landman to rejoin us?
He's probably asleep by now.
which I'm sure everybody has been waiting patiently for. And I'll turn it over to City Manager Damian Obed.
Yes, I'm, thank you. I'm thrilled there's still four people here. So, this, this item is, as you recall, back on October 13th, the City Council introduced an ordinance to update our traffic impact fees, and also introduced in the public hearing, other than the ordinance, also the resolution that adopted the traffic impact fee report. So, you have the ordinance which enables the impact fee, and then the report to update the impact fee. And at that meeting on October 13th, the, the resolution, the public hearing was continued. It was, it was discussed that night, but then continued to tonight to complete the discussion on the traffic impact fee report. In the intervening time, there was one modification made to that traffic impact fee report, which is, the updated one's included in the council packet. The update, as described in the staff report, was the addition of a signalized intersection of Old River Highway in the vicinity of St. Joseph's Way. And the net effect, the net effect of that amounts to $177 per unit or per thousand square feet, depending on which category of land use you're talking about. But it's $177. So, part of that also I'll point out was some of the underlying assumptions for the new roads on the west side. There's a, in the traffic impact fee report, there's, there's a cost split between development-funded and, and city fees that can be, that can be levied under the program to enable the city to do master planning and things like that. So, in other words, if you have some of the new roads programmed on the west side of Katati, there's, there are some fees in the program that enable the city to master plan, for example. So, if you have a development come along and they're, and they're dedicating part of their property to construct a new roadway, rather than have just a little segment of roadway, it'll enable the city to actually do a master plan on where it would connect on both ends, so that there can be a, you know, sort of a logical build-out in the roadway in the future. And that, that cost-share ratio was slightly adjusted to, to put more money in on the east side of town, which helped defer some of the costs for the St. Joseph's, Old River Highway signal, if that makes sense. So, so that was the, that was the tweak in the traffic impact fee report. It basically added that project and did a slight change in the cost share. That is it for the staff report, but one thing I do want to point out is, in the, in the ordinance that would be adopted, if the council decides to adopt it tonight, there's a small change to the title of that ordinance. It's just removing the, it starts with introduction of, so it's obviously not introduction anymore. That was the last meeting, is the actual adoption of an ordinance tonight. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to council. Are there any questions for staff at this point? Okay, and then I have a quick question for our city attorney. Procedurally, since I already opened up public comment at the last meeting, should I do that again, just to cover our bases, or?
You could reopen the continued public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify, since it was a different procedure than, than our usual. So, with that, I will reopen public comment on the adoption of the updated traffic impact fee. Alright, seeing nobody, I will close the reopened public comment and bring it back to council.
I move to adopt a resolution updating the traffic impact fees and adopting an ordinance permitting the levying and collection of the updated traffic impact fee.
Second, oh, I'm seeing our city attorney.
I'd just like to request that you take the two items separately.
Okay.
Take the resolution first and vote on each separately, if you would. Thank you.
Okay, then let's start that all over again. I move to adopt a resolution updating the traffic impact fee.
Second. Alright, I have a motion and a second on the first item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, may the record reflect, that's a 5-0 vote in favor of the resolution.
I also move to adopt an ordinance permitting the levying and collection of the updated traffic impact fee.
Second. Alright, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, may the record reflect, it's a 5-0 vote in favor of the adoption of the ordinance. So, I'll move on to correspondence and pending legislation. I see there's no items, so we will move past that item and go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, I have a couple items tonight. As you may have noticed, the downtown specific plan revitalization project is officially underway in terms of construction. There's vegetation removal occurring on the roadway this week. It'll be shortly followed up by removal of street furniture and then concrete demolition in the areas where the, the new widened sidewalks and streetlight poles and street trees will go. So, seems like a long time coming, but it's finally, it's finally moving now. And I did want to throw out a save the date for the city's annual tree lighting ceremony that'll take place this year on Friday, December 4th, beginning at 6:00 PM. There will be activities, crafts, goodies, and a very special guest for the kids. I can hardly imagine who that might be. All members of the public are invited to attend, and all volunteers are welcome. We are still looking for volunteers for that event, so if you know anyone, please send them to Vicky Parker. Would gladly accept any volunteers. And you can contact the city's community development department, where Vicky is, at 665-3637 for more information. And, kind of getting ahead of ourselves for Christmas, let me back up a little bit. Halloween is just around the corner, and just a reminder that this Saturday, it is, it is Halloween, and the trick-or-treaters will be out, and we're reminding all drivers to drive cautiously with the children out on the streets. And, kind of on that same thread, you may have also noticed that Draper Park has some new lighting, some new pathway lighting out there. It's operational. You can go out there tonight. And if you, and if you happen to be trick-or-treating on Wolford, you will, you'll notice new path lighting on, on Draper. And they use the new low-energy Bollard lights, like have gone in in McGinnis. And so, they're much more sturdy than the, the prior sort of pathway standard that you see around the county. So, that's a good improvement for that neighborhood. And then finally, I did want to introduce the newest addition to our team. You may have met already. Craig Scott is our new public works director, city engineer. Yep. So, Craig was, Craig was born and raised in Altadena, California, and after graduating from UC Irvine with a bachelor's of science in civil engineering, he moved to Northern California. He's married and has four children, ages eight to 19. And Craig's, he has specialized in his career in water resources, both in the public and private sectors, preparing designs and master plans. He was an operations supervisor for a water system serving 400,000 people, and more recently was the public works director and city engineer for the city of Cloverdale. As a consultant, he's worked on water, sewer, and storm drain systems for dozens of cities across the country, and gained a wide perspective on infrastructure problems and solutions. And some of the agencies he's worked for in the past include Contra Costa Water District, the city of Modesto, Town of Windsor, and like I mentioned, the city of Cloverdale. He's also worked for a couple private consulting firms, Black &amp; Veatch and Winsler &amp; Kelly, more recently. So, with that, I just wanted to introduce Craig and let him have an opportunity to say hi and give you guys the opportunity to ask him any questions, but be easy on him.
Thank you for the introduction, Damian. It's, it's, I very much look forward to coming here and hitting the ground running and picking up and building on all the momentum that your city manager has, has gotten going here at the city. And he is definitely happy to offload those duties of public works director, city engineer, onto me. And that enthusiasm comes, you know, this is my, beginning of my second week here, and so, he just relishes handing me these giant lands and stacks of paper, and I welcome that. I very much look forward to working with, with the council, for the council, and serving the public here in Katati to improve the quality of life here. So, very, very much a great opportunity. Thank you.
Alright, did you, anybody want to ask any questions, or do we want to keep him off the hot spot for too long?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Anything from the side?
I was just going to say, welcome, Craig. Thanks for coming all the way from the big town of Cloverdale to the big town of Katati. And we look forward to working with you in the future.
I was just going to say, with four kids between the ages of eight and 19, if I got my notes right, I'm not sure how much time you're going to have free, but I, on a serious note, very glad to have you here. I was lucky enough to be actually up in Cloverdale at their meeting, the last meeting for Mr. Scott. And hearing his counsel talk about him and his colleagues there about how much work he'd done in the last, you know, very difficult decade, as we all remember. It's not been an easy time of governance, and the things you accomplished for Cloverdale were remarkable. So, we're very glad to have you here. I'm sure Mr. Obed, who's been carrying more than a double load for quite some time now, will be happy to have you here, and we are too. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll echo everybody's welcomes, and thank you so much for, for being here and for taking on this, taking the reins on this position. And I've also lived for brief time in Altadena, so I'm one of the few people you won't have to point it out to on a map, so just wanted to let you know that. So, welcome.
Need to catch up.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, so does that conclude the?
Yeah, sorry. So, that concludes the report for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Did you? Did you?
I, Mayor Gilman, if I may, I had a question for Mr. Obed.
Oh, certainly.
You talked about the tree lighting ceremony and save the date. I don't remember hearing a date to save.
Oh, December 4th.
December 4th.
Oh, thank you.
6:00 PM.
Okay.
All right. Yes, Mr. Barish, hold your hand.
I'd like to welcome our new city engineer. There was a time here at City Hall where we hired assistant city managers, and there was another heading, assistant city manager, and there was another subheading of it, but this, assistant city manager spent a lot of the time writing grant applications at a time when that was real popular. I think we can get a lot more useful, usefulness out of a city engineer. So welcome on that. This issue of volunteers in Cattati that the city manager brings up, about volunteering for the Christmas events, I would like this city council to seriously consider looking at this issue of volunteers. Councils in the past have looked at this and wrestled with this with varying degrees of success. Years ago, a few of us volunteered to tear down the old municipal room and to get it ready for a remodel, and Harold Berkamire, myself, Jeff Fox, Chief Stewart, we got in there, tore that place down inside one day. We didn't need to sign a release of liability for the city, we just signed up and we showed up, and Mr. Deloso has talked about all the times he's volunteered over the years and so forth, and I know some of you have as well. But we really don't have a policy for volunteers, and one time I volunteered, a couple friends and myself, to adopt a park in Cattati, to maintain it every week, and city manager Diane Thompson immediately objected, saying, "No, we can't do that. That would be a liability to the city. We don't want any liabilities. You citizens can't volunteer." Maybe I was of the wrong political persuasion, or not registered with her party, political party, but this issue going back and forth of who can volunteer and who can't is a sore spot, and it was the late Mayor Coleman who said one night when this issue came up, when I talked about seeing what we could do to get more city volunteers, he looked right at me and he said, "George," quote-unquote, "George, unless citizens are kicking down the door of the front of City Hall to volunteer, I'm really not interested," end quote. And that left a lasting impression on me of this issue of volunteerism, how it's gone back and forth. I would like the city to look at it, maybe think about it for a while, and come up with a policy, because there are liability issues, there are dangers in some of the projects that come forward that need volunteers. But we need some consistency, and we need not to play favorites, to pick your friends, and not ask other people who may run against you, against you for a city council, that you don't want us out there volunteering. So please, please consider that.
All right, is there anybody else who'd like to comment on the city manager's report items? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to city council reports. So I'll start over here, Councilmember Deloso, I see you've got your game time already.
Just a couple of very quick things. I'll let Councilmember Landman talk more about the Sonoma Ledge date in Sonoma, but I did accompany him on that, where we spoke to state assembly member Mark Levine and state Senator Lois Wolk were there, and there was a number of cities represented, but not all the cities in the county. And this Thursday, I'm going to be meeting with staff, this is just coincidental timing, staff from Sonoma County Ag and Open Space District, and I will update them on the movement forward of the direction we just took tonight for Veronda-Falletti Park. So I'll let them know, since that's probably one of the reasons they want to meet, but I will give them an updated bit of information on that. So thanks, that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, I attended last week the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting, and I just want to give you an update on the continuing saga of the JPA. Yet again, they laid out some options. The first option is renewing the JPA agreement and making that be whatever it is it's going to be. The second would be having our CPA doing that work, but what became very apparent is, in order for that to happen, a JPA agreement needs to be created. So all of the warts and everything else that happened, has to happen for the Waste Management Agency to do it, you would have a similar thing, although some said, "Oh, well, maybe it can be a simple JPA agreement." But as people started adding, "Well, what are they going to take on? What aren't they going to take on?" It became very clear very quickly that there will be nothing simple about it. The third option is to just let it go away, just let it terminate, and that will always be an option unless we do one of these options, but that has some really serious downsides. We'll have to do our own reporting, we would have to all have contracts to get rid of our recycling, because right now it's handled through the JPA. So we would have to have individual contracts with Republic to do that stuff, so anyways, there's a whole bunch of reasons we don't want to go there. And then the fourth option that was thrown out that sort of, the group said, "Don't even bother to pursue that," and that's to have our CPA statutorily changed, because they are in existence by statute, and nobody really felt that that was going to go anywhere to really get the state legislature to redo that. One of the big issues around having our CPA do it, if we were to create a JPA, there's a couple things that people pointed out and staff's going to have to deal with. One, they only want to do really the reporting, and it's kind of unclear, they may want to do ordinances, policy stuff, but it's still yet unclear whether they really have the capabilities to do that. They absolutely do not want to deal with the composting or HHW. That became, you know, very clear that they don't want to have anything to do with it, which would mean that separate agreements would have to happen in order to get that county to deal with that stuff through the MOA with Republic. And that kind of makes a mess, too, because Petaluma's not part of that, and they would have to have their own agreement, so there's all kinds of stuff. So the bottom line is, is the three options, that extending the current JPA, make it be whatever the cities want and the lawyers want, and it's 25-year-old agreement, and I know it has warts on it, but, you know, kind of redoing that and let everybody re-sign up for that, creating a different JPA and letting our CPA really assign the duties, which is a little bit crazy. All you really get out of that is you don't have to have a board. You really are saying, "You do the duties," but here, another board is going to kind of do that. A lot of people had problems with the fact that that board has three supervisors on it, and, you know, a lot of the cities felt that they wanted equal representation. I think we saw that, you know, with the renewal, or the redoing of the library JPA, you know, people want a little bit more equalness. So more to come on that, but that's kind of what happened this time. It was a very heated discussion, and so more to come.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Landman?
I'm just sitting here amazed, seeing our best two options for waste in this county is one, keep the JPA we've had functioning with whatever, as you said, issues it may have, functioning well, though arguably for years, or get rid of that by making another JPA. Somehow that strikes me as counterproductive, obviously, but it is what it is.
It did most of us, too.
Yeah, and we will see what happens with the, I do hear the issue, I believe most of the cities felt very strongly about the issue of representation on our CPA, and if it is brought forward to us to take that on, I wouldn't be surprised if that issue does come up, so the council knows that I did bring that forward, a lot of people heard that. The suggestion from Aaron Notto, which was well-received, actually was to use the library JPA model, which in this case is an improvement for everybody. It works for Santa Rosa, it works for all of us, and it even still protects some of its size and justifiable concerns that the supervisors have. So if they bring that back to us, I wouldn't be surprised to see if that comes up. So interesting times, for sure.
Yeah, because it sounded like, it sounded like the structure cannot just be changed like that.
No, the staff report we had, all of a sudden, it was a little more, whoops, there's more to be done here.
Exactly. So it's not like they could vote to redo that. There's some statute stuff that gets a little bit complicated with that.
We're all watching these packets, but yeah, I don't think, that one won't happen quick, that's the good news of it.
You know, that library JPA, from what I've heard, was created by many DaVinci-esque architects. It's just a rumor I've heard.
I've heard that rumor, too. Well, for this one time, it brought smiles, that's for sure. When I thought about the way Mr. Mayor Alan Notto put it, it was a good compromise that worked for everybody, it did handle that concern, and instead of three supervisor votes, there would be one supervisor vote, one Santa Rosa vote, because they are as large as the county, essentially as many constituents, and one shared them, which they would have the fun, probably even more difficult than figuring out the waste management issue. They'd have to decide who they'd want to select between the two of them, but very workable, so we'll see what happens. We did have a chance to have our ledge meeting, that was great. We hope to have either late November, early December, one with Senator McGuire and Assembly Member Wood as well, so stay tuned for that. Be happy to invite either our alternate or the mayor, whoever can make it to that. We usually bring a couple of people, not just one, so. I was just going to mention our last Sonoma Clean Power meeting, because we had an important discussion on expansion. I did want to bring this back to you, just to give you information, and also any direction or input you may want to give me is certainly welcome. As you know, this is nothing new in the world of CCAs, marine clean energy has been expanding rapidly, really, in many ways, geographically, and that's not a bad thing. And we've had interest for, oh, a year and a half now, from numerous locations, Mendocino, Lake County, Humboldt, the whole county of San Mateo, the city of Davis. Some of these are serious, some of them are not as serious, perhaps, potential suitors, but now that we've had a chance to get through our first year, we're sitting down and taking a serious look at policy of how to deal with this. We're looking at, I think the general thing I want to share with what I heard from the board, a majority, it's actually a full majority openness to the concept of expansion, provided key, important things are met, making sure that there are greenhouse gas reductions, benefits come from expanding the service, making sure that there's no impact, either short-term or long-term, that we can see for ratepayers, existing ratepayers in Sonoma County, finding an expansion, making sure that local control is maintained and governance stays manageable and controllable and doesn't swell alarmingly, and making sure that whoever joins is a good match in terms of buy-in to the key goals and ideals of our JPA, in terms of balancing good rates for consumers as well as GHG reduction. And with those things, I think it'll probably work well. So that's, we're waiting to come back, staff will have further direction. I think the first serious suitor we will have will be the county of Mendocino, who has written us a letter from the board supervisors asking our input, and I suspect that we will reply something along the lines of, once we do our due diligence, there's an openness, assuming all these key factors line up. So given that our board all wanted to make sure that their councils and their communities were aware of this, I just wanted to share that with you. I don't see any big potholes, but if you have any thoughts, I'm happy to hear them, or if you think of something later, you're certainly welcome, or anybody in the public is welcome to contact me offline on this.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Moore?
No, not at this time. We, although I should say, we did have a successful teen center dedication at the library.
Very good. Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't make it to that. It looked like a lot of fun when I saw the photos afterwards. I actually have nothing to report as well, so I will go ahead and close the regular session at 9:34, and we will adjourn into closed session to finish up our closed session items. Thank you, and everybody have a good night.